So in your packet you'll see that there is a draft for an update to the tree protection ordinance. Even though that it was originally proposed, and I'll forget the dates, but it was like back in 2005 or '06 or something. It had, of course, right before the recession hit and changed some of the business growth that we had been experiencing at that time. I know that the planning commission again reviewed this last year and some conversations came up about it. I wasn't even aware we had one at that time until I heard from trustee Bennett. So we pulled it out, we started to go through it, and it's been kind of a round robin between myself and Jill from Clearzoning and David Laddie is our attorney. The copy you have before you is the most recent draft, and you will see some of the highlight information there about some changes that were proposed. What we really tried to do was take a look at this thing and make sure that it was burdened with more commercial land surprises that we weren't stopping business from coming in. But yet, we also wanted to document to live what it was meant to be put into place for, and that was to make sure that we did protect the trees and the community and that it wasn't just going to be people coming in clear cutting lots and moving forward. So we're trying to make it more user friendly with some of the amendments, and we wanted to put it out here just to have some open dialogue about, you know, are we getting close, how do people feel about where we're at and meeting the needs of the community that we had envisioned a few years ago when it first came out, and are we making the right changes? So take a few moments to look at it, then wherever we want to go, that's up to you guys.
Well, I can tell you how it started. It started when one of the bigger residential builders clear cut several acres of land, beautiful trees that the neighboring subdivisions had a very hard time with. And it was a huge complaint, so then we went into the environmental goal, trying to keep as many of the big trees as we could to have that kind of atmosphere in the grand land. And so far, it's worked pretty well. It's a, if people come to us before they start building. But I think they, I like the wording in your, your comment.
Some of the discussion came out under that tree management plan and the requirement that a Michigan-registered forester is certified arborist. We kind of bounce that around back and forth, saying is that something that is required or necessary? But if we don't, our biggest concern is that how do you name an expert if we have somebody who we just, you know, you gotta have them qualified, I guess, in our term, otherwise we have to open up for anybody. It could be the local long-winded service that they bring forth as their expert who tells you how they feel about their tree management plan, so that's kind of where the language came in.
So the yellow highlighted would be something worth proposing?
No, that existed.
Oh, that exists?
Yeah, there's just some comments on it.
Yeah, the way I interpret it is the blue is what's added.
Yeah.
The activity.
That's all that was added?
Well, no, under, there was an addition made on page four. You'll see some township tree fund.
Right, I saw that.
Which talks about that whole thing, I think there's two. There was the initial underline, which I think was David Laddie's, and I think the blue underline is now.
Yep.
And then the yellow area where we had comments. So that comment about the who would be qualified, I think that was a question because it did come up once over the last year or so. There was a gentleman with a body, which didn't seem to be terribly unusual or difficult. But I think through just discussions with the folks here, it seems like we have enough choices for people to find someone else in that list. Registered forester, certified arborist, registered landscape architect, or someone from the Michigan Department of Agriculture with DNR, EQ. And it's only come up once, so it may not really be that significant of an issue. We did look at, you know, Arbor Day Foundation, and we looked at other tree protection ordinance. And this is fairly standard language, even, and some of them don't even offer that those many choices. They just say it has to be arborist and that's it.
I think, is there quite a variation? I think we might have an arborist witness, actually. But is there quite a variation between these designations? I don't know, you know, I'm just wondering if one could basically become a landscape person just by putting a title on my name, or if these are all certified certifications?
Well, those, well, the first, the Michigan-registered forester and certified arborist, those are certifications, as well as being a registered landscape architect. So a landscaper wouldn't be somebody that would be qualified. Someone who's sold trees would necessarily be qualified, although they could be a registered forester.
Mr. Laddie, if I own 10 acres, or I just purchased 10 acres, and I want to raise two horses, I, this ordinance prevents me from clear cutting that 10 acres for the sake of raising animals?
Oh, that's a good question. I didn't, I didn't like cross-references with Wright Farm Act. And that, now that you bring it up, it would be interesting to consider. Obviously, you have, when you have land that's being used to grow trees, that's Wright Farm Act area. And I don't know about the, about the methods or the processes for various farming activities and how it would affect this ordinance. My thought would be that it's very likely that whatever process you would use in terms of the agricultural process that's identified by the Department of Agriculture, it very well likely will preempt our ordinance. So if it was necessary, for example, to clear a pasture for livestock, you can make a pretty good argument that that activity is exempt from our ordinance.
Okay, so however, then, another scenario, if I have a five acre parcel and I want to just build a home with clear, open space to my swimming pool back and have a large backyard, this ordinance would come into effect and prevent me from doing that?
No, not necessarily prevent it, but you would have to replace those trees, okay.
How do you replace if you can't have them there? Or you mean somewhere else?
Somewhere else, yeah.
So make a donation.
Part of the, part of the biggest thing behind it, in what we talked about, is that it's a donation to the tree fund, and then that money has to be used very specifically. And so what we wanted to do was clean up where that money can be used as well. If you can't replant them on the individual property, then we're saying you put the money into the tree fund, and then those funds can be used to put trees, we can use those replacement trees anywhere within public lands within the township.
So the valuation is determined that I've got a place in that fund by who? Who determines my five acres, what it would worth, the trees?
Well, there's a whole, you know, I'll defer to Jill on this, whenever you want to jump in. But my thought is that there would first be sort of a cataloging of the trees that are, that follow the qualifications in the ordinance. And if you have trees that are identified as those that need to be saved, then you'll run into a discussion about how to mitigate, whether you can cut down or then if you have to mitigate.
Like maybe have a certain diameter or certain?
Well, yes, very specific.
If you look up page 11, it'll show you that the tree replacement standards. It is very specific about the caliber of the trees, whether they're deciduous or conifers.
So when, when does somebody come up and do that, do they buy the property or buy?
When you, if it would apply for a tree, you would have a permit, and then you would do that, so at that time. So if you buy property that has trees on it, it's up to you. But if at some point you decide you're going to develop that, and trees are going to be impacted by the development, and you need to either fill out a tradeable permit or an affidavit that no trees, no regulated trees.
And this only applies to five acres or more? Okay, so that, the good news is we probably don't have any of those conditions for residential bill or for commercial bill for that.
If I'm not mistaken, it also delegates the tax related to, or of the trees up to 20%.
20%.
So manage general deal, five acres, two acres.
How many acres has that been, this must be way over five, six acres?
Yeah.
How many are you thinking of already developing some trees? Was he 10 or?
Yeah, I think so.
About 10?
So in that case, because they clear cut every year. We have a determination, an evaluation, they did a tree survey after the fact. And rather than judging by the caliber at Rustbite, which is where it's supposed to be measured, we had to measure it down below, so it would be bigger. So that, in effect, was a penalty for doing it all at once without a permit. Whereas, we would like people to do that ahead of time and really be thinking about how to design the site in such a way to minimize the removal of trees.
So if he was only five acres, he wouldn't have been penalized at all?
Um, no, not for, you know, not for commercial development, keeping it level and bad. But in that case, he was able to replace the trees, well, really replace the trees on the site.
So that's a dealer, he wasn't, I mean, he had to take down the town trees too, because they were small.
He did, Nissan dealer, yes.
Right, so was he over five acres also, his parcel?
Yeah.
So some of the things we did, I mean, you gotta remember, this ordinance exists right now. It's there and exists, but what we're trying to do is put that update in. And so some of the things we talked about is, do we have an appeal avenue? Because if somebody comes in and maybe it's managed hardship or whatever, so you'll see that some of the changes now are that we're looking into, how would we do that if somebody comes in and, you know, we also don't want to make the word, somebody comes in and buys a tree farm, for example, wants to put a development in there, and they say, holy cow, it's going to cost me $600,000 worth of money to the tree fund to do anything in there. You don't want to make it so cost prohibitive that we've lost development or you've lost an owner an opportunity for the sale of the property that could actually be a great commercial addition to our community. So there has to be a way in there. We talked about how do you, how do you put a level, how do you cap it? And so we're trying to figure out how, how does that exactly work? Does the planning commission make determinations? Do we give an opportunity for an appeal process to somebody to be able to put a level on there where at some point, you know, we can't have somebody writing us a check for a million dollars for trees and then where are we going to plant a million dollars worth of trees? I mean, it's, it has to be reasonable, so that's what we're trying to achieve with some of the revisions.
Financial cap on the, right, so much per acre, per, per partial?
And we really haven't gotten to that.
Yep.
What is that amount? I've done a lot of research on tree ordinances across the country, and I haven't come up with one that says up to a maximum of this many dollars. They're pretty much, you replace them or you contribute to a tree fund. So we can continue to explore that. And there's a couple of different, you know, if you start to dive deep into that, if there's a parcel of land that's completely developed with trees and yet it's owned general commercial, it's obviously the township's intention that that be developed. And at what point does that become too difficult? Or is it possible that maybe that, if the trees then become more of a high priority, then maybe that property isn't owned for general commercial, maybe it's something that's a little bit less, that would feature a little bit less intense development on it? So there may be some.
So in, in other those, you follow the appeal process?
No, they do have appeal process, they do have that. And then it would be up to the individual body as to what those standards are. Maybe it would be very similar to the zoning board appeals in terms of their findings of the site. Maybe there's some topographic conditions that are at play that make it impossible to develop without removal of trees. And so maybe there would be some kind of consideration for that, and I think that's where it's at. I do want to go back to the question about the size of the property. And it's an acre or more, well, it's all commercial and just institutional office, industrial, and multifamily development or redevelopment. All commercial, oh, sorry, three, and the regulated development. This is then the case, we have to change the part. All commercial, institutional, office, industrial, or multiple family development or redevelopment. So all of that, and any new single-family residential development or improvement to existing residents on an acre or larger. So single-family lots less than acre, this does not apply, but pretty much everybody else it does.
And it also only applies if you're doing improvement to an existing residence on a lot. So if you just had, you just wanted to clear trees out, but you weren't doing the residence.
If I had to cut down a tree and build a death, you could apply.
Well, but you can remove up to four regulated trees per acre.
Oh, okay, so it would only be allowed?
Right, and so there's that assumption that, that homeowners are going to need to cut down or want to cut down trees on the property for five and a half years. So that's providing for this order.
Right, and if a tree gets disease or there's a problem, those are the examples.
So they're going to have to, they're going to scrub, they're going to, they don't come.
Right, and one of the things that I think would be a good use of the, you know, we put in the section about the definition for the tree fund on page four. But I think that also considering spending the funds on education of community, both business owners and homeowners, and the values of trees, how to take care of them, prevent disease, and keep them trimmed properly so that they continue to be beautiful and healthy.
At the page three, you're talking about the numbers you're allowing to cut down, is that annually or?
Every 24 hour period, or 24 month period, right? Every 24 hour, you, every two years.
Yes, every two years.
Okay, 24, okay.
So you're going to remove four trees per acre every two years.
I'm going to go back to the appeal provisions there. Are we talking about appeals like in the sense of hardship appeals? Or, because I mean, if we're going, I think we're going to need some criteria for the commission some discretion on, because otherwise we just have to apply the different standards.
I would be in favor of not adopting the ZBA requirement. I mean, I think we want to give ourselves as much latitude as we can, but still give.
And just say we need some criteria. We're going to, you know, want to get some land.
And we didn't get too specific or patientiary with those. Right now, we just suggested that it maybe be the planning commission. And letter E particularly speaks to the financial hardship. I think all of, everything needs to be put in writing so that you have a record of, well, what did we do in this previous case, or who decided here, and it's important to be very consistent. And I think that's where we kind of got into a little bit of a, you know, do we put in the limit, or how do we, how does the planning commission make that decision? Where do you look, when it's a financial hardship to somebody, it might not be a hardship to somebody else. Is it based on the value of the development in play? Or based on the development or the value of the property?
That's where the.
That's what I'm concerned about, because I mean, if we have to make a decision, you know, we need some criteria, otherwise it's going to look like, you know, exactly, we like this, we don't like that.
Plus it'd be more consistent.
Exactly, right, exactly, and that's what we really want. We want this to be applied consistently throughout.
So that's why you don't see anything in there, because we couldn't come up with it in there.
We wanted to kind of discuss it and see what your thoughts were on that.
If there's a couple of, let's say there's some substantial trees and it's in a key area that it just makes a spot. But I'm going to cut it down, because it's only going to cost me, you know.
Historic tree designation.
$4,000, I can afford $4,000, I'm cutting it down tomorrow. Well, you know, I don't know.
Anyone can designate a tree for historic tree designation. And a tree that has been designated by the planning commission to be of notable historic interest to the township because of its age type, size, or historic association will be looked at as part of the process. You don't want to cut down historic designated tree, that's a bad thing.
And don't nominate each other's property.
I'm coming over to look at your property.
Big maple's in the back, I think maple's from scrub. This is a living document, we can adopt it, we can revise it. I don't know that I want to spend hours and hours and hours trying to make it perfect. And I think it's generally geared towards commercial development and bigger parcels. We're not going to have a whole lot of commercial development on a one acre or two acre lot. It's going to apply a lot to this, I don't think. I think it's generally designed for the bigger type developments to keep somebody from clear cutting partially wooded field for a strip mall.
Or subdivision or anything?
Or subdivision or anything, so, I mean, I wouldn't mind definitely looking into it, but I wouldn't say, you know, don't, you don't have to not do anything because you don't agree on the perfect plan right now, because we could revise it each month.
Well, that's true, and I, my thought was, because we, again, have the appeal process going to the planning commission, that it wouldn't necessarily be the township board that would be administering this at any level. Except you're going to have to, you're going to have to sign off on the values that we, that we may set for replacement trees. So I'm thinking that maybe the planning commission might want to have some discussion about how they would like to administer, frankly, or if, or if they want to kick it to the ZBA or something like that. Well, you're right, it does need some filling out, but I thought that the body that had to make the decisions might be the one that has the authority.
Well, that's going to be my question, where do we go from here? I was just going to, the planning commission, to you, and to the rest of the board.
From here, that was our vision, is that we tried to take it and tweak it and listen to the comments that were made, and then try to present a document back out to see, so that the board would know what we're working on, what we're suggesting, and then bring it back to the planning commission, and then have the planning commission take this up again and review it and see if, are we close to where we needed to be? There's a lot, I know there's questions about, you know, how we're going to administer it, what the appeals process looks like, and how you develop a cap. But that's a great topic of conversation perhaps.
And then there's a public steering requirement. It's not part of zoning work, so it wouldn't be the planning commission necessarily, it could be.
Well, it would be, it would be good if we followed the same process, basically, where you're like, here's, here's what we recommend sent up to the board.
The planning commission will help here.
I think it might be good, I think it would be awful to us to hear, I mean, you'd rather get the input earlier rather than later. So I think it makes sense to have that.
Do they have a map or a list that shows all the sites that are out there that potentially have trees on them now, that, so we can focus, see, how many five acre parcels, or how many 10 acre parcels, or what, what are we dealing with? We can just look at the whole market, see what's out there that.
We might be able to do that through the GIS database.
Yeah, and that way you could say, okay, we don't have to worry about, oh, then they're worried about, this is what's out there, because it's already been developed, so whatever's left, we look at what's left.
I didn't do it with a flag, those.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that way you could look at, and then that would help us to decide, okay, we've got so many 10 acre lots, a couple 15 or 20, then you know exactly what you're dealing with and you could gear it to what's, and is left, because all the land is spent at all. You're not going to be dealing with it.
Right now, the site plan, when they come in, we look at that, and we also tell them, do they have to do a tree ordinance permit, or full permit, you know, as part of the site plan review? So that's where it really starts, and you can tell me if somebody in here somewhere, I didn't see them. I was looking at it real quick, but the other thing is, is what do we do with all these trees? Or what do we do with all the replacement dollars and that kind of thing? We can keep pumping them into, you know, Bicentennial Park, but at that point, some point in time, it's going to be a forest, you know.
Well, they say, yeah, there are other places that can, you know, that can be used that unfortunately have trees that are gone, you know, that, that we have replaced.
Right, because then we have, you know, a lot of our subdivisions that have come in.
Yeah.
A lot of those, a lot of those aren't long now, they're developers, and they still have a significant, a significant amount of development left to do.
There may even be some opportunities.
Some dead ones that, you know, got made it through the lottery.
Possibly some opportunities along public roadways too, with the rights of way, and even with your highway extension, where we may not, we might not put a tree in that area too.
Or in a long section.
In a long, I really need on them. Because we might, it's a little tight, maybe we'll be able to work with private property or. No, but one of the things that we had talked about was after we were moving this along, that then we would maybe create an APOC or maybe a permanent tree.
Right.
For whatever you want to call it, but they're, they would be, we would thought, you know, maybe someone before, two from planning commission, Parks and Rec, township board, maybe some of the local tree professionals in the community. But to sit on that body and to come up with some locations for tree planting, tree replacement, as well as possibly, if they're interested and they want to go this route, developing some educational material too, to be able to promote that within the community to both residents and business owners, of the value of why we do this. And I think that's really important. And one of the other things that we talked about too, was every time someone makes a contribution to the tree fund, we should mark that somehow. And when we make those expenditures out of the tree fund, there should be press release and, you know, a little watering can or something.
But as a replacement, you have a little marker that says, you know, this was made possible through the tree protection fund by, you know, Nissan or.
Right, where they were, right. I've never seen those signs along expressway near the doors, these trees were illegally cut.
But if you think about any public lands, I mean, so it could be an enhancement to a border or it could be the cemeteries that we have free of, it could be other ways that we can still enhance, still get the trees in the community, but, you know, not just filling up Bicentennial Park with trees and all, you know, we plant trees along the soccer fields and we do that a lot too. Like at some point, you treat out, you know, but what about the cemeteries? And can you use the money for pre-removal stump grinding and replacement? I mean, there's, I think you should be able to.
Well, I think by letting people know who's contributed to it too, it helps, you know, you know, the business that moves in there, people are saying, yeah, but they cut all those trees down. Yeah, but hey, do you realize they contributed, you know, $30,000 to the tree farm.
Right now, we have $46,000 available to spend on some trees, and I think it'd be nice and symbolic if we were able to do something this year, and then as we move to bring this forward and do something, that we recognize the folks who put the $46,000 in there, at the same time that we're all public carers to, you know, move this document forward.
Are there receivables for that fund too, or did that somebody pay up today?
No, we still, we have some coming. But it had been, it was part of an internal process that wasn't set up. It was going through, but it's just never been set where we had it as a receivable, and so that was all a process we put together.
I'll make a suggestion, in Bicentennial Park where the new soccer fields are, along the back of the park pathway comes through there, and pathway goes to a residential area that the pathway takes a sharp turn to the east and cuts across right between a residential home and the soccer field. Put them up between the soccer field and the pathway, so A, it kind of blocks the view from the park of that high backyard, and B, the park as well, and also kind of, when the trees develop, will be a little bit of a protection from flying soccer balls for people using that pathway.
Sure.
And it's being an actual barrier.
Absolutely, that's good.
Speaking of receivables, somebody applies for a pre-removal permit, are they given a timeframe for payment, or they got to pay before they cut the tree?
I'm thinking it's a process involves, first of all, you got to catalog it, find out what applies, and then what can, how it can be mitigated. I mean, I don't think the money comes into it until you find out that you can't mitigate it, you can't plant trees on that area, it's sort of a last resort. Is that what you mean, that like?
Well, I meant, I'm a developer and I'm going to, I need, I need a tree removal on a building, a commercial building, and so I make payment to this tree fund before I can start.
So is there like 10 years or five years or?
I think we want to do it more so that it's kind of part of the review process and then part of the occupancy, I mean, when you're going to get signed off.
Also before the occupancy, you can approve.
It's like, hey, there's one last.
It's just like they would be, the review fees, building permit fees, this could be part of those fees that they.
Right, and so if we go through the site plan review process, it triggers a receivable now so that when it's completed and they agree that, okay, here's where we're at, there's no appeal on it, that we agree that this is going to be, that they're going to pay to the tree fund. I mean, our goal is to keep them, to keep the trees on the parcel, but if they can't, okay, they're going to have to pay. That site plan review should now trigger, it's back to finance, forward receivable. We set up a column, now we are, we're aware of evidence it's going to get filled out if we don't see.
But isn't that similar to our tap-in fees, because not everybody can pay for, you know, the tap-in fees too, right?
If it occurred and we had to do a payment plan, like we do with tap-in fees, I mean, I'm sure we can work something that out, that's a simple process.
But we should get a model, we can look at, see if it's working, you know, it's not.
Do we have a payment plan for tap-in fees?
We do.
Oh, you're right, they're down, yeah.
Just like you asked me, I assume I would, we've never had a developer say, oh, forget it, I can walk away with development against this, like.
No, usually just cut down first.
No, usually it's come down first.
Maybe they did work really hard to accommodate the rest of those.
But it's still, it's not gonna be.
Their landscape, it should be, everything is built the way they said it was gonna get built, it should be quite public.
Well, if they do, they can sell lots for a while, 'cause usually if there's trees on your lot, you're gonna pay more than a bare, than a bare lot.
And that's the value of this whole, that's really the point of this whole thing, is it makes everybody's property worth more.
Right.
When the community is full.
It's a community, pretty. Find a. Find a line between deter development and maintaining the trees.
We wanna be very clear that our goal is not to give money here, our goal is to keep the trees on.
Keep the trees on, that's a good message, actually.
Okay, can we move on to the next?
I think so. Did you notice I put times on your agenda?
Yeah, we'll be.
Well, two, the first two, so.
Back, we're already on the third item.
The next one, maybe the other ones go quicker.
I'll make this one harder.
The tech village, you have a market analysis, a conceptual plan update.
Um, we had an internal team meeting to talk about, exchange information and share some of the data that we've swept over the many years that we've been talking about this. The market analysis is underway, and we should have, that'll be, the initial process involves some survey work, and so we are gonna be reviewing a draft survey, and then we're getting that to the township for the community. We will work, we will work with the chamber too, in terms of getting business owners to complete that survey as well, 'cause that's important data, until things happen, and work with the rest of you, and I think since we have that, I'd like to direct a press release and have the ground line view, put that in there, so people know that there is a survey opportunity available, and really get the word out, so we get a good return rate on our surveys.
That's for commercial entities or businesses to survey.
Right, and I, I believe there's also going to be a residential survey as well, so I think it's too, too.
I'm going to meet with the twenty, we have a group called the Big Twenty, the ten, twenty biggest townships in Michigan, and they are meeting tomorrow, and one of the things on, on the agenda is a mixed use or, uh, in public-private for the, and for this kind of thing, so we're gonna see what is going on in the other areas too, that are our size.
So I know Rod's waiting for the signed contract, which I haven't done, I sent him yet, and he told me he'd already started work on it, so I was worried. But I was holding it strategically because it's a public-private partnership, I think that's important to remember, is that we had two private property owners step up and offer to help fund this, portion of this, and I was waiting, I have the checks from one, I'm waiting for the check from the other, I got an email today that said it would be here either today or tomorrow, so I will execute that contract tomorrow and get it over to Rod, so he doesn't have to worry about that, we will get it done. But I needed to strategically hold it up, 'cause I kept telling him, we've already delayed this three weeks, I need that check, so. That was my message this morning, and he promised me the check would be here within, you know, twenty-four hours, so.
Just on my debit's account.
We're excited about this opportunity, I think it's gonna be, I think it's really gonna be great for the community.
Can we look at the map for just a second? It's on page five, that proposal. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page first, what area we're talking about. It's both the green and the, where is that?
Do you see the green border on the edge, it's like the green border that kind of goes from like Gray Road?
That big block.
Just past where we killed them.
That road.
Everything within that green square.
The whole thing.
Kind of hard to see.
What is that green road, is that McQueen?
Yes.
Looks like.
Yeah, McQueen, Gray Road, or the county line basically to the side.
The conceptual plan will really just focus on the gray area.
Yeah.
Oh, just.
Down the corner. But the market study will, will get a larger area, and I think actually be encompassing of the township too, so there'll be some, I think, good information there.
So most of it's in the R D section, that day section?
The illustrated concept plan will focus on that triangle piece.
However, if it's done right, it's gonna spur development all along, I think.
Yeah.
Correct. And the conceptual plan makes sense, because those were the property owners who participated in this, so it's the property owners from the R D, and that where the conceptual plan is gonna be focused on those properties, and we think it'll make it very attractive to perhaps a single developer for the entire project.
I have a question, I was looking at the timeframe and the funding on page seven, do we have, for the funding set, all four tasks?
No, we were.
Number three.
Okay.
Yeah, this is gonna cover some task one, two, and three, and task four will be, uh, at a later date, discuss that one later.
My first question was, five acres is too small, and I kind of put some more thought into it, and kind of listened in on some conversations, but no, that's not too small. I think it's like, these kind of properties would give us a great chance to encourage development, but still maintain a lot of control at the board level, especially for that development, so. But I don't see a problem.
You're jumping ahead, you're moving us ahead on our agenda.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm. That was his. I, I, I'm sorry, you're right, I got all the bad pages right there.
I'm thinking that's a little bigger.
Come on, catch up with you guys. I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
I saw my timeframes, and I appreciate it. So, yeah, we are on the planning unit development, and if you look at, uh, these actually kind of blend very well together, it's a nice segue, because you look at what we're trying to accomplish over at, at the technology village area, and then you swing right into the PUD zoning provisions, and some of those changes that are being recommended in your memorandum from Jill, it really hits home about why we wanna do this.
You went from twenty to five, is that what we're proposing, okay.
Again, and as we point out, the benefits of the PUD give the township some flexibility, and gives the development community that flexibility in the application of the development standards. We always say, this is not a tool for you to avoid complying zoning ordinance. However, we recognize that there may be some benefit to what the development is, to the community at large, in exchange for some relaxation of certain zoning standards. So we might see an increase in height, we might see a decrease in setback, we might see an increase in density, but on the flip side, we may be getting additional pathway connections, we might be getting enhanced architecture, we might be getting a use for something that really is something that the community needs and has been, has expressed interest in. And so with larger sites, or maybe the planning commission should flip it, there are some smaller sites that may be a little bit more challenging to develop. And so lowering the standard five just gives an opportunity to consider that, it doesn't mean that it'll always be, the planning commission may say, no, you know what, that's too small a site, or what you have in mind. We don't think that's qualified.
We always should talk about X and Y on land area development, do we talk about the height of buildings, the Z value?
Yeah.
Or PUD, I mean, would that be something that a person could actually exceed the height ordinance, but through the PUD, there's a trade-off or some other?
Right, absolutely, and that's, is an important thing to consider. And I think really, the thing the planning commission just talked about when we were last meeting before, especially in the Holly Road area, close to the freeway, that there had been some increased height requests over there. And that might be very appropriate, especially with some of the topographical considerations and some of the natural features over there. If we're not spreading out, maybe it's okay to allow a little bit more, and if we're preserving and conserving some of that area, that might be a reasonable thing to, to allow, so, yeah.
So we could allow it, we could, and all greater height.
Right, assuming that you find that it's not gonna impact any adjacent residential properties, or impact any other, really any adjacent properties, a few sunshine, great wind.
Kids have a lot of great priority tools, or, 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 like, look, you know, you've got this three acres back, if you're developing, you can make this a pathway, or you can make this a park, and trees here.
Instead of spreading out.
Right, exactly. Change for a five-story building instead of a two.
The opportunity, when you go to a site selection place to sell something, you know, about our community, it, it gives us an opportunity to sell.
Right, and in addition, there's a couple areas, Sagon Street, the Sagon Street corridor study that was done in two thousand eight, talked about a couple different zoning classifications, the need to create those, there's a Triangle Village, mixed use, which we didn't do yet, kind of done. And we do have in the zoning ordinance, or no, in the master plan, we have the Village Mixed Use District. They don't really correspond at this point, and also flexible development doesn't correspond in the actual zoning district. And the PUD at twenty acres, especially in the Sagon Street corridor, would be very difficult for someone to acquire enough or assemble enough to make that kind of redevelopment really possible, but they can look to those studies, the planning commission can look to those studies and say, yeah, you know, you've got five acres here, this is, and says this is what we envisioned, you know, the area of Sagon Street corridor study envisions this. And they give you that, then that tool, but you've also told the development community what you have in mind there too, so it's not like completely starting from scratch, we've given people some ideas of what it can work.
Building up instead of out preserves trees? So much way out, and I admit, it's not done the way I'd like to see it done, if it was something like every family, I'd like to see it done a little bit differently, but it's, it's a great example of this type of development, you know? And the economy tanked a little bit there and kind of stalled things, but now that's kind of recovered, that's, that's actually developed by nice.
I don't know, but if you drive down one twenty-seven towards, right between Lansing and East Lansing. Well, you've got right north of Lake Lansing Road, you have some development going on there, but I believe it's probably mixed use, you have an outdoor mall right on East Lansing, right on, uh, Lake Lansing Road. Just north of there, there's some really cool condos, I believe it's probably retail on the first floor, and, yep, but it's not just your straight apartments, you know, they look like they've got character.
It's on the east side, right?
Yes.
Yes, I know.
A massive brick.
Yeah, nice little.
So, yeah, I think it's win-win, we get the development, we get a lot of control on the development.
Yeah.
It just so happens that the PUD amendment is on your agenda this evening, for you to consider the changes that were proposed by the planning commission. Next item was the next meeting day suggestive topics for review, we put this agenda together, and we thought, is there something that the planning commission or the board would really like to talk about? And we'll, like we said, we'll try to do these every two months, it's just a matter of, Jill and I can come up with agenda items, I assure you.
I can, you have our, one list that we can talk about. Actually, can I back up to one thing, it's not an agenda item, but last time we got together, we talked about, I think it was Jeff Seifer, who had brought up the Holly Road corridor and the standards that we have, Holly Road and Sagon Street standards. We talked about the Hill Road corridor standards and how some of them might be outdated, and since then, we've gotten through the, all of those studies, the Sagon corridor and those other two, and looked at the zoning ordinance to see if those old standards are still applicable, or if they're outdated, and we're gonna, I'm gonna share that assessment with the planning commission at their next meeting in May. But generally, the current zoning ordinance has better standards in terms of parking, landscaping, access management, but some of them have some things that might be worthwhile, like foundation plantings for landscaping, some of the architectural standards, and so I think we'll talk about that, as well as really the need to, when we do our next master plan update, which should be coming up pretty soon, then look at those corridors again and see if there are anything, if there are other specific needs that those areas have or that other areas have.
Maybe a more basic question is, do we need separate corridor standards, or should we just have uniform standards throughout the township?
That's sort of where I'm coming from, and so I think that could be an easy transition, and then just kind of confirm that through the master plan process.
Does it just intuitively seem, you know?
Yeah, I think the two plans came about at some time, so now it's time to kind of consolidate.
The Holly Road and Sagon corridor came in nineteen ninety-eight, and I think the Hill Road standard was before that, but I can't.
So do we have to change anything on the Hill Road corridor right now, so that more businesses, they pop up that we control it, or is it gonna be all right?
I think that's something we should talk about in the next master plan review, because I think there are issues up there that.
We can't change it, do we have to wait for them to do it, can't we change some of it now? I mean, I heard that there were some problems down there, and you'd like something different, you know, when the, when the Taco Bell and some of those went in there, but whatever that was, it seems like you'd wanna incorporate that immediately, you can still update it later, and more stuff, but at least change the stuff that you think is bad immediately, and then gradually change more stuff.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
I don't know if that's possible or not, but.
When does the master plan, could review again?
Well, it's by state law, it's reviewed every five years, it was done in two thousand ten, and then we did a supplemental amendment in two thousand thirteen, so.
It should be done.
It should be done, the township as a whole, I think that the market study will help too, on that, and so, the closer those two things are, the better, that, that data will support the master plan review, so maybe in the fall.
So the timeline for the market study, one second and a half?
Um, it would probably be about two months, I think. We have to, it takes a lot of the survey data, probably the biggest.
I mean, I'm really hoping that we have the market study and conceptual plan, uh, I'm sure Jill will deliver that to us in August, which is a, a very aggressive time.
Sure.
But I've given it till September.
So, what, let's, next meeting day, now please.
We decided to do this month, correct?
Every two months, it would be sometime in June, and if we do it on the.
So when are we gonna do it, one thing?
So the second Thursday is June ninth, if that works, we can do it at six P M on June ninth.
Yep, we can do it. Six P M, June ninth?
We'll shoot for it, and we'll make sure that we can get a, a few of them, I guess.
Did you say Draymond, who couldn't make it, Tom?
I can't, I'll be out of time. If I see, forget stuff ahead of time.
Okay, yeah.
As each other, maybe, and we'll make that or something, put some boats together.
Okay.
Yeah, like you, like you have Dennis here, this would be great to have a couple days of videos.
Yeah, I gotta put it together this morning, oh, I gotta.
This was better, I mean, last week, we didn't have, you know, we just kind of.
We're gonna.
Better, we know where we're gonna go, so this is good.
Yeah.
And, yeah, agreed.
And then the, the open discussion portion of this, what did you notice? Oh, the top to review.
Sorry.
I think we should talk about the master plan at that time, as a topic of review.
I'd like to see the master plan updated, yes.
Let's get through stuff, something was brought up last week, too, was the discussion about the roads, it's kind of fearful to make sure that the developers finish the roads.
Oh, like a bond?
Yeah. Yeah, so.
Okay.
Get some kind of a follow-up on other, like current section, labor development, like the roads are putting in.
Any element roads are putting in.
Isn't that in our, our plan now, it isn't there?
We, we have it now. We've gotta get more interested in it, we gotta get some applying it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Part of it is, we gotta have them put the bond up ahead of times that we don't, because you're always saying, what, can I just have an, an exception?
Let me finish this too.
One on, because I mean, as soon as I've done all those heavy trucks in here, we'll.
Yeah. Whereas if we get a bond, it's like, okay, we got the money now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just do it whenever, I mean.
But the bond isn't in place yet, or is it? So, we need to put that in place as quick as possible.
The language is placed, we have to just make sure administratively it's, it's being used.
Oh, okay.
Doesn't the county already have a bond, or is he doing that?
They do. Yeah, and so, you know, most of our roads are public, but still, we, we need it here too.
What would be, what would be a road? Subdivision of public, public roads when they're all done, right?
When they're, when they're dedicated. Woodfield, a lot of Woodfield is private.
Right, I understand.
All roads are private.
I'm only thinking of all the roads today, but you're right, if any developments.
A lot of the good roads are private.
Woodstone, that was, is that private? The condo.
You know, it's funny, in, yeah, I can't remember, particularly in Woodfield, there are some, a lot, they were proposed to all be public one time, then they were proposed to be in part private and in part public, and it really becomes a patchwork.
Yeah, there's some private over there too, but Woodstone, or the condos off of Grand Black Road, the development being built next door.
I, I can't tell you up top, man.
Well, in both cases, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to stamp bonds in place in both cases, because.
They want to finish.
It isn't, it hasn't really, I haven't, I haven't seen the county's process work really better than ours, and so we might as well have two of them there, and then if we can get our, our program fired up with a consistent procedure, that will be, go a long way toward resolve.
Well, my point, I guess, would be if you're, if it's a public road, you know, for that sense, like, would, would we, the county's going to require that contractor, we're going to require as well, so there'd be two bonds?
Well, we want to be able, I, I think what we can do, and I don't know if we've done this in the past, we want to be able to be involved in their body process as far as the amounts, and being able to trip the requirements, because what they may feel is not important.
Yes.
It's important to us.
Okay. So it'd be one bond with our, with our kind of a handshake on it.
Yeah, I mean, we, once we make our wishes known to them, they'll, they'll participate with us.
Yeah, what they might force back onto is just like we did with the subdivision bonds, so, well, we got to find out, yeah. And I think when they're building those subdivisions, can't we insist on the proper criteria, because a lot of them, they're building subdivisions, didn't have the proper criteria, so they couldn't even be, become public roads, because they weren't built well enough.
That's up to county standards.
They, they said that's up to county, I believe.
We, can't we control that, because it's building in our township?
Well, they, what happens is they'll, they'll propose them to be public, and then they, and they won't, they won't finish them off, and the county says, we're not going to accept it.
Right, but with a bond, that should fix it, switches.
Right, right.
As long as the same, all I'm saying is, we want the standards to be up to the county roads, so that our bond will finish it, and it'll be done, and we know they'll be okay, and not have to come back.
Our site plan review, our site plan review right now, that's harder one. Well, that's, that's where we get into the bottleneck, because what happens is, some of the developments that came in with Hawxai or something like that subdivision, they proposed streets that were very narrow, that had no intention of ever becoming a public road.
Right.
Okay, we had no vehicle, or at that point in time when that came through, we might have a vehicle, but we had no enforcement process for it, so when the subdivision went down, they had a partial road going here.
Right.
The developer's gone, okay, and you've got no vehicle left, nobody to go after, no vehicle left, and, you know, half the road.
But, so, the other problem with that is, is if it doesn't, if development doesn't begin to sell again, you're not going to, you're not going to complete a road to nowhere, and you're going to want to wait a certain amount of time, so it's, it's kind of more of a hard, frankly, to get those things to work and, and get the time right, but we, what's been interesting is we've had a couple developments that, that stopped developing for a while, and now they picked up again, and the folks that are moving in are saying, what, what's the status of this road, and when's it going to be done? That's a hard question.
It's a tough one.
It's a good question, so that's an hard question.
So there's a, like you, like David said, it's kind of a dance that we go through.
Right, I was just trying. Developers are going to propose a private road, period.
Well, I know, but that's why I think we should have more control, just like we're trying to keep control of the feds, and say, no, if you're going to build it here, this is how it has to be, and it's got to be maybe in phases, phase one will only go so far, build the roads at least for that phase one, so at least all those people will be okay, in the back section, you don't go there, but we have to kind of control it, because we've been burnt, I'm just trying to fix how we've been burnt, you know, because we're left with it, we can't.
Okay, we'll have, again, as I say, that's our next time's agenda, so we'll see how we can progress forward then, and I need Holly for a tournament.
So we'll, okay. Basically, every time, first light of glass, that's actually okay.